I just want to clarify, it's not necessarily the property.
Or the sidewalk.
Yep, this, I won't talk into two mics. This black dotted line here is the property line. We're not actually cutting into the property.
Okay.
But yes.
I'm sorry, restating. The curb that is there will not be there anymore. It'll be moved over so that you can pull a car in. Otherwise.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear. All right, cool. That's why, that is 18 feet then, the way I was measuring it, obviously. Okay, so that's one. Two, if you go back, there's a stop sign on Harding and Broadway. Was that? No, sorry.
That's okay.
So, right over here, that's a stop sign. Was that taken into consideration, given that now we have any? Because before, the egress was set more towards the center. Well, not center, where the green spot is here on the property. So we were further away from the stop sign. So now you've got the stop sign there. You've got the, was that considered in the flow?
Yeah, I think looking at the property as a whole, one of the major things as traffic engineers that we look at when, you know, a street and driveway or two streets aren't necessarily aligned, but they're relatively close on a, what I'll say, vertical scale. Is, are the left turns hooking left turns? As in, you know, when you make a left and somebody else makes a left, are they going to interfere with each other? Or are they not? How we have this driveway designed, and honestly, the entire property itself wouldn't allow for it, but what we think is a benefit is they would not be hooking left turns. Somebody can make a left out of the driveway and somebody can make a left out of that street at the exact same time and wouldn't have any interference with each other.
And that crosswalk that's reflected here, is that where the current crosswalk is?
Correct.
Okay, has any consideration been given towards how to slow people down on Broadway because of that crosswalk? Given we have it today, people don't stop for that. So I don't know if there's something that was considered. Because now you're going to have a car pulling out, cars flying by, and someone trying to cross the street.
We haven't looked into any specific, you know, traffic calming for that specific crosswalk on Broadway. Again, we have a lot of pedestrian enhancements as far as our property, but we haven't specifically looked at that crosswalk on Broadway, no.
Might I ask for it to be considered?
Yeah, I mean, that's a municipal roadway. I think part of that probably is the mayor and council and if they're looking to slow down, but, I mean, we'd be more than happy to work in conjunction with the township to see if there's something we could do there.
And for that matter, the one on Lincoln is the same issue. I think Lincoln has the, I don't know, I don't have the facts, but I know there's quite a bit of accidents there. So, traffic study, so done on Joseph. Was one done on Broadway for flow? Because 20 years ago, you're right, it was there, but 20 years ago, there wasn't as much traffic in this town either.
Yep.
Have you considered redoing a traffic study for Broadway? Can you consider redoing a traffic study for Broadway?
Yep, as I mentioned before, we did traffic counts this year at both Joseph and Broadway and Joseph and Westfield. We will submit those to the board for review. But again, based on our analysis, there was no significant impacts, but again, we're more than happy to submit that to the board.
It's just, yeah, I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Yep, I'm sorry. Carmike Savoca, 46 Broadway. Mr. Kennedy, I don't know when you did your traffic on the Sunday, because I can't even pull out my driveway. 20 years ago, with the AP being there, I had no problems. Now with the AP not even being there, it's seven o'clock, their cars are just stopped.
We, our traffic counts were conducted actually, I believe, two days ago. I don't have the exact date, but we counted the intersection of Broadway and Joseph, I think, two days ago, and then the intersection of Westfield and Joseph.
Because in the morning, it's crazy. You can't even pull out.
I understand, and again, we did these counts within the last month. We counted the real traffic volumes at these intersections.
Monday through Saturday?
Thursday, or Tuesday through Thursday is typically when you would conduct traffic counts. That's when the volumes are the highest on the roadway. That's when the highest volume coming in and out of our site would be generated. And again, we conducted those counts on a typical, I don't, again, I don't have the exact day, but it was a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Can I ask why those reports weren't handed in for the board to review? Because we've been a part of buildings much smaller than this, and we've been able to analyze those numbers. And if something of this significance between two roads that are very busy, I'm just curious as to why that wasn't given to us earlier.
So, our original traffic study was really a comparison memo between what existed on the site before and what is proposed. As part of the review letter, it was requested that we take a look at, I think it was specifically the intersection of Broadway and Joseph, to get an understanding of what the traffic looked like today and how the site would affect it. Obviously, we did those counts, and we're more than happy to submit it, but by the time we did the counts, there was, you know, there wasn't enough time to.
I just feel like the answers to the public would be much more coming from a point of confidence if you could say, hey, this is what we've seen, this is what we're projecting. Yes, it was a food store 20 years ago, but based on current buildings of this size with this many occupants, this many vehicles, this is what we're projecting. Because I know the sentiment of the town is that it's going to be in and out, in and out, in and out, and it's not.
Yeah, I mean, I have the.
But unless you have the information to show them, it's kind of hard, because they're trying to believe you.
Absolutely, and I have the traffic volumes associated with this development, and I could list them off real quick. So 138-unit residential development located in this area, not necessarily close to rail transit, not necessarily close to bus transit, so really essentially relying on single occupancy vehicles. In the weekday morning peak hour, which typically occurs between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., your typical hour that people are leaving to go to work, we would generate 51 total trips. That's both in and out of the driveways. In the weekday evening peak hour, which typically occurs between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m., again, typically people coming home, maybe leaving to run errands, we would generate 54 trips. So 138-unit development generates slightly over 50 trips in the highest peak hour. Obviously, the other hours throughout the day have traffic going in and out of them, but as traffic engineers, we look at the worst hour of the day, so we would generate about 50 trips.
Right, so just so everyone knows, that's less than one car per minute, based on that study?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's trip gener, that's trip generation, right?
Correct, and that's from the IT.
I guess what people are asking is verification during your count that Broadway or Westfield Avenue, the volumes of traffic that were going down those streets.
Yep, I have those numbers as well. So, Westfield Avenue, sorry, Broadway, in the highest peak hour has about 430 vehicles traveling eastbound and about 570 vehicles traveling westbound. So call it about 1,000 vehicles in the highest peak hour. Westfield Avenue is slightly higher than that, 550 or so vehicles traveling eastbound and just over 630 vehicles traveling westbound, so closer to 1,100 vehicles total.
And we would be adding 50 trips to that number.
Exactly, so we would add the 50 total trips to those existing volumes. Obviously, again, there's two driveways here and traffic would be dispersed. Not every car would go in the same direction. So really, what you're looking at is probably an additional 25 to 30 vehicles on Westfield, maybe an additional 20 vehicles on Broadway. But really, again, not a substantial increase in traffic when looking at the roadway network in terms of the traffic that this site would generate.
800 to 1,100 cars, a lot of cars on that street.
That's the existing traffic.
Right, that's existing traffic. I think that's what the people are pointing out, and you know that because you've done a count. Anyone else from the audience?
I had 1,100 cars for the three hours.
No peek out.
That's in the highest peak hour, so one hour.
One hour.
Yep.
Hi, everyone. Do I have to state my name again? Jackie Tamillo, 96 Ivy Street. I just want to clarify, the redevelopment plan, was that made after the approval on this property in 2021?
There was a redevelopment plan before the approval, and there was a redevelopment plan after the approval. The reapproval was, I believe, in 2021. The approval, this board approved it orally on May 6, 2021, memorialized it in a resolution on June 3, 2021, and the redevelopment plan, the amended redevelopment plan, was just adopted by the council this summer.
So the angled parking was part of the summer redevelopment plan?
That I.
Yes, that's an accurate guess.
Yes, okay, yes, because I tried to go back to find the original plans for this property when it was proposed as 75 units, just to kind of clarify, because at the time, the bank lot was not part of it.
Correct.
So now that they've acquired the bank lot, and I believe at that time, there, as far as I was reading, there was, there was confirmed no additional proposed parking along the roadways, including Broadway. So at that time, was all of the parking within the limits of the property?
Well, it's useful to refer to the prior resolution. The board and the applicant has to deal with this redevelopment plan.
Yes, yes, I understand. I guess, so my question is, when you, when you acquired the bank property, did you consider not putting in as many apartments and allowing for a little more parking for retail? And not even having to do angled parking on Broadway and Joseph Street?
We're required by the redevelopment plan to provide angled parking space along Broadway and Joseph, so we're complying with that redevelopment plan requirement.
Let's see. So you said that you studied Westfield Avenue, but I just also want to bring up the point, and I don't know if that's a question, but that there is going to be another 38-unit apartment across the street, very close to this property, that from what I understand is also going to be entering and exiting onto Westfield Avenue? Is that a question, maybe a more question for the board?
Did you consider that additional building across the street?
Yeah, or do we know how many they're proposing is going to be flowing onto Westfield Avenue in addition to what you're saying is going to be flowing onto Westfield Avenue?
Obviously, a proposed development that's not built isn't included in our traffic volumes that we studied. A 38-unit residential development, obviously, 138-unit would generate more traffic. A 38-unit development is probably somewhere closer to 10 to 15 trips in the highest peak hour. While it wasn't directly considered, because it wasn't in our counts, because it's not built yet, in my professional opinion, it would not have any substantial impact to how this development would interact with the roadway network or Westfield Avenue or Broadway.
Okay. I did just want to bring up a quick point again about that jut out right at the corner of Joseph Street and that first angled spot. I don't know if you want to try to just zoom back down?
Sure.
No.
Oh, sorry.
Where people, I guess, are going to be. So, to me, this first spot looks very close to kind of where people are going to be turning. So, and I don't know, again, I'm sorry, I'm not a traffic person, but just limited sightlines? And then, so you see no problems with that first spot kind of backing out as people are trying to either turn left or right from Westfield Avenue?
I don't, and I think one of the things that what we considered here is providing that bump out, so where you see really the landscape and the sidewalk kind of come, if you're looking down on the page, towards Westfield Avenue, that's what we consider the bump out, and that's really the idea behind that, is not only the pedestrian safety, but really, it slows vehicles down as they're making a turn. So obviously, we have to provide the 11 spaces on Joseph Avenue, and what we wanted to do is make it as safe as possible, so that's why we provided that bump out.
Okay. I also saw that on the other, what you have on the other side of Joseph Street, it just says "concrete curb," which is not technically what's there. You have another apartment building with an entrance, you have a house, you have the laundromat, and then at the end of the street, you have apartments. Were those factored into the layout of these spots on Joseph Street?
Yeah, all of the driveways on that side of the street will be maintained. We're really only impacting or changing the right side of the street. No driveways on that side will be closed, everything will remain open.
Right, no, I know that it's going to remain open, but again, as far as the flow of people flowing in and out of those as people are trying to back out of spots.
You're asking about the interaction between our spaces and their business.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're relatively small buildings. Again, Joseph Street is a very underutilized, like I would say, street. About 30 people traveling on it, travel along it on the highest, in the highest peak hour. And again, I don't see a significant negative impact from the angled spaces on either the properties across the street or really the entire roadway network as a whole.
Mr. Manetti brought up the fact that, I believe, it's Lincoln Boulevard is also the other one-way. Now, this is going to potentially be a one-way street. I feel like this is going to push a lot of traffic that want to loop back around to Westfield Avenue onto Liberty Street. So I just want to clarify that there was no traffic study done to Liberty Street or Lincoln Boulevard.
We studied the traffic volumes along Broadway, along Joseph, and along Westfield Avenue. There will be a minor amount of traffic that's redispersed, I'll say, throughout the roadway network. Again, about 30 people use Joseph Street right now. They would be dispersed throughout probably the closest two or three streets that connect Broadway and Westfield. But obviously, as I mentioned, there's about 10 different streets that connect the two. I agree with what you're saying, is Liberty is the closest, there is a signal there at Broadway and Liberty, so maybe a majority of those 30 vehicles would use that. But again, there's a signal there. I don't think the 30 vehicles that would be utilizing Liberty instead of Joseph, if all the vehicles on Joseph were pushed to Liberty, would have a significant impact. A majority of the southbound traffic was right turns, likely heading towards the Parkway, and it wouldn't have a significant impact on the interaction between Liberty and Broadway or Liberty and Westfield.
Right, you state that, but, but like I said, I live on Ivy Street, so that whole neighborhood uses Catherine Street to kind of flood out to Westfield Avenue, and right now, you have a hard enough time turning left from Catherine Street. Then you also have people from Liberty Street trying to turn left with the flow of Westfield Avenue. So if you're saying that all these extra cars from the potential of Joseph are now going to be trying to come out of Liberty Street to make, well, I guess they'd be making a right, which would be easy for them, but then if I'm trying to make a left, it's just, again, I don't.
If I, if I could help clarify, during the highest peak hour, traveling southbound on Joseph Street, there was 30 vehicles that made a right, four vehicles that made a left. During the PM, there was 26 vehicles that made a right, one that made a left. So majority of these vehicles are turning right. They get to the stop sign, they get looking at Westfield Avenue, and they make a right turn. A few of them make a left turn, but the amount of, or the small amount, I guess I'll say, of traffic that would be added and dispersed throughout those five, 10 streets that connect Broadway and Westfield would not have a significant impact on those intersections.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing none, does the board have any discussion before a counselor makes his final statement? No, counselor, your summation?
Yeah, just really briefly, as the board has heard.
Yes, yes, yes. Why don't you do that before he makes his?
Before you do that, I'm going to let anyone from the public wishing to come forward to have any comments, positive, negative regarding this application, please do so. State your name and address. Ah, familiar face.
John Raffoa, 40 Broadway. Look, I applaud the effort to come up with something to do with the space. We've all agreed, it's been an eyesore for a while, and believe you me, no one knows more than myself and my brother-in-law. We live right across the street from it. However, we are changing the landscape of Clark, right? We really are, and everyone here lives here, so you know how busy it is already. Imagine what it looks like today. Imagine what it will look like with another 138 units, and I understand traffic study, I get it. Let, put yourself in the shoes, drive there on a Tuesday morning at 7:30, dropping your kids off. Try to get out of a driveway, live through that. That's what I would ask. So my ask, quite honestly, is for the town council to think through, how can we improve traffic in this town, right? You have a lot of kids in town. How do they get around without getting hurt? It's not a walkable town, and if we are to redevelop this downtown, it needs to be walkable. This is not walkable. It will not be, all right? And we've had some glimmers of hope, right? You've had some new units, good projects, but I didn't even know about the other 38 units that are coming. So again, fits, makes sense, however, we, you guys have to look at it, please, and if not, I'll give you my number, we can talk through it. Parking placement will be an issue. So, given that cars are going, not following the speed limits today, and I'm not talking 25 going 30, I'm talking 25 going 45. I'm on this street, cars are on my tail. Not cool, not right, not right. Something will happen. Get ready for it, get ready for it. Between Lincoln and Broadway's a racetrack, right? It's how do I get from down by Westfield Ave, or, you know, down by Rawway? How fast can I beat, how fast can I go so I can beat the Liberty light? That's what that is. That's what it is, right? Like, it's a racetrack. It's a racetrack, right? And then the last piece I would add, not to belabor the point, because it is late for everyone, and we all have day jobs, or most of us, right? Schooling. Make sure that we're considering that. We know the state, status of our schooling today. We're at capacity, we're shipping kids across the town. That didn't happen 15 years, well, 20 years ago when I moved here, that wasn't happening. You were designated, you were good. Actually, it's 25 years ago that I've been here, but that wasn't happening, and it is now. So how are we going to accommodate that? How do we find room in the budget or whatever to make that a reality? Because otherwise, you're going to become, you're going to, it's not going to be the Clark that we came here for. It's going to be a bigger city, it's not walkable, and we're probably a generation away from this going in the wrong direction, right? So that's what I would ask you. That's the only comments I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric Rodriguez, Tolbertal. So just, a couple of questions, so, well, not questions, comments. So I know there was a discussion earlier about adding a crosswalk across Westfield Ave at the intersection of Joseph. It wasn't mentioned whether or not there would be some sort of like a yield sign, pedestrian yield sign, that someone might activate while trying to cross. So I was just saying, you know, that might be something to consider. And the only other thing is, there was a lot of discussion around Joseph becoming a one-way, and I think it was Lincoln being a one-way in the same direction. And my comment was more, if the planning board might consider recommending to the town council that they consider reversing the direction on Lincoln so that people would be able to circulate around the block as opposed to having to go, you know, further, several streets down to be able to accommodate that. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two points.
You state your name and address?
Oh, sure, Delia Collins, 72 Georgia Street, Clark. The property on the corner of Joseph and Westfield Avenue at one time was a former gas station, from what I've heard from former residents. Was there any research done to find out if there was remediation done to that property before it was built upon by the bank?
The bank application building was actually delayed because they had to remove an underground storage tank years ago.
I'm sorry, I can't hear?
When the bank expanded, we approved the application. It took them a while because they encountered underground storage tanks, and they remedied, whatever they had to do, they did it in accordance with the DEP.
Okay, thank you. Regarding stairways, I only see two. I don't know how many complete occupants will be in that building, but it seems to me that the stairways seem deficient for the amount of residents that will be living in.
There's actually three.
I'm sorry?
There's actually three. Three stairways.
Oh, where's the other?
The one when they come into lobby, and then there's one on either side, about two-thirds of the way down.
All right, I only saw the two on the sides, thank you.
Hello, John Greaves, 30 Parkway Drive. Just really quickly, I, you know, I have some mixed feelings, I think I echo some of the concerns of the other residents, but I did want to just say, you know, thank you to the board for, you know, pushing for that additional retail space. I think that's an important component of, you know, making the downtown what we hope it to be, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Greaves. Anyone else?
James Scolo, 73 Halliday. I think this complex is really big. If you can downsize it on the back of Broadway to allow like meter parking for future people to come into retail space, that might help the town with getting money back to the town. And is the developers and renters going to pay taxes for schooling and roads? That's a question I'm asking.
They'll either pay your traditional real estate taxes or enter into a financial agreement with the town pursuant to the local redevelopment law known as a payment in lieu of taxes. The significant difference is that under traditional taxes, the breakdown is different than when you have a pilot program, and a pilot program, 95% of the pilot payment goes to the municipality.
Is there a way to get out of the pilot program? Because.
Well, it hasn't been even applied for. We're, I'm just saying, if it's eligible for that in the future, if it comes to that. The board hasn't even approved this application, is still considering it. So, and that's a question for the town council, not for the planning board.
Well, you're, this is a redevelopment for this space, but you're actually redeveloping the whole town. So the schools are crowded as it is, and there's no way seeing any of them, and I don't know if you've been in school the past two to three years, it can get hotter, it can get more people in it, and the safety of our kids should be come first before adding 138 units, that's around 200 people if you add two people to a unit. And I think the schools are not going to benefit. I moved here 10 years for the school system, and it's going downhill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire LeBruno, 20 Post. I guess my general comment is, and I understand, like, the first engineer that testified, he did, you know, show what the, like, required setbacks were, what the, you know, requirements were. It's just that the building is taking up 85% of, you know, the lot, and while I understand it is paved and there will be like the DEP required improvements for water maintenance or water storm storage, it would be great if, and maybe this is a town council thing, there could be something done about like lot coverages, and maybe that's a way to, for the town to have like more say in what's going on. I know people in other towns that have been told, you need to pull up your patio because your property's over the lot coverage that you're allowed to build on. So I think that's maybe something that needs to be looked into. So, I think that's maybe something that needs to be looked into as a way for the town to have a little more say, and that we don't end up with such enormous buildings. Just one other thing to note is, it was testified here that proposed buildings are not included in, you know, the information that they give you. And this is one of, I believe, like, what, three buildings being proposed to be developed along there? So, when, all these things that seem like this is negligible, negligible traffic, negligible on the schools, on the utilities, you know, is it negligible? And I think if you look in, like, some of the surrounding towns, you'll see, maybe that's really not the case. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Tamillo, 96 Ivy Street. I just wanted to, again, kind of reiterate the same sentiment as the first gentleman that spoke, as well as Mr. Greaves that said that. I do appreciate that you guys pushed for the additional retail. When I originally made notes about this project, and just the projects along Westfield Avenue in general, and the viable downtown, you know, I just, I'm getting a little lost on how a viable downtown is just a four-story apartment building next to another four-story apartment building, next to another four-story apartment building. Where are the stores? Where are the restaurants? What are we walking to? When I bought my house, being close to Westfield Avenue, I guess almost eight years ago, I was excited at the idea of Westfield Avenue becoming something that I might be able to walk to, and go get dinner with my husband, and take my kids to, you know? And it's just been, I, I'm, it's very dejecting as a resident to just keep seeing the same copy paste, copy paste, copy paste, and especially this, I mean, I'm happy that maybe we might get a little more retail space, but again, it's like, we'll consider it. What does that actually mean for us? It's, it is just disheartening. I would love to see some more actual revitalization. I would have loved to have seen, maybe we acquired the bank property, and maybe we didn't have to cram in more apartments. Maybe we could have used some of that for open space for residents. Like, Mr. Triola said, like, what are we getting out of this? I'm not getting anything out of this, except more of a headache trying to turn off Catherine Street, and more kids in my kids' classes at school. So, again, I appreciate everyone's time tonight, and, yeah, I just hope that, I know that you guys have your hands tied as far as affordable housing, but, you know, at the end of the day, maybe we could lessen this, 30, 40 apartments. How many affordable housing units is that really affecting? One or two? I would just love to see some more actual improvements to make this actually more of a downtown, like you said, like Cranford, or Van Wood, or Westfield. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, it's an increase of nine affordable units.
Thirty apartments?
It, again, referring as you have to the prior approval, it was 12 affordable units. Now it's increased to 21, and it goes to meet the town's third round obligation, which we, the town is now in the fourth round, and is trying to shore up the third round, so it can also comply with the fourth round. So, that's a significant thing that the applicant has emphasized, that there is a benefit to the town in the sense that it is, it aids the town in complying with its affordable housing obligation. So, it's, and those 12 units, additional units, if you multiply them times inclusionary zoning, you're talking about, really, a total of, I believe, 60 units, if you, if you do the math. So, it's, it's, it is really, it's a benefit, and it shouldn't be overlooked.
If I can just embellish that, when Mr. Cruz speaks to the third round, that's the round that's expired, okay? Township is in a deficit, the town's in the process of negotiating with State and Fair Share Housing Center. One of the elements at play is that the town's ability to address its prior round obligation was based on the town receiving bonus credits, per se. Units that aren't actually constructed, but the town gets credit for, for the work that it did in previous years. And right now, if the town can't demonstrate the viability of Westfield Avenue to continue to produce units, the ability of those surplus credits to be eliminated still exists. So, if that occurs, if those 32 credits would be eliminated, approximately 160 units would have to be built to replace that deficiency. So, I can just say, from a planning standpoint, I think everyone made some very valid points tonight. And a lot of this is balancing a lot of different intangibles at play here. And, I mean, the developer did respond to your, one of your concerns about adding that additional space, which would bring the total up to, I think, approximately 9,400 square feet of retail space, which is pretty significant for an area. So, just, I just wanted to add that, Mr. Cruz, because there are some delicate matters at hand right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing no one, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quickly to sum up, just want to emphasize that the application before the board tonight is a fully conforming site plan application, conforms with the amended and restated Westfield Avenue redevelopment plan with respect to number of units, height, setbacks, number of parking spaces, location of parking spaces, impervious coverage, and every other sort of zoning requirement in the plan. Also, as was mentioned, this provides 21 units of much-needed affordable housing for the region, and toward Clark's fair share. It also redevelops a mostly vacant and dilapidated block here in Clark, with a very well-designed new mixed-use building. It also, as the traffic engineer testified to, generates very little traffic. I know there was a lot of discussion regarding traffic generally in the area, and off-site traffic. That's not before the board, it's what this site generates, and the site generates relatively little traffic. Also, just want to emphasize that there were some concessions made by the applicant to address the concerns of the public during the course of this hearing, namely, working with the county and trying to create more pedestrian-friendly elements, such as a crosswalk on Westfield Avenue, and also the addition of 3,600 square feet of new retail, which will make the project that much better in terms of revitalizing Clark. And I just ask respectfully that the board grant the approval this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you consider a motion and deliberate, I would like to outline some conditions if the board is inclined to grant this application. Initially, the applicant has agreed to comply with all of the board professional reports, Mr. O'Connor's report of September 10, 2025, the Fire Department report of 11, 25, the Police Department report of 9/17/25, Mr. Ricky's report of 9/25/25, Mr. Troutman's report of 9/29/25. In addition to that, there are other conditions which the applicant has agreed to. As Mr. Flannery just said, that they would go to the county for a crosswalk on Westfield Avenue, and while they have, they would make that request to the county, and for the county's consideration. Doesn't mean that the county will accept it, it just means that the applicant will make that request. The affordable housing fees applicable to the commercial part of this development will also be paid, and as a result of that, that payment increased because the retail space increased by 3,600 feet. So, that is then a contribution to the town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The applicant has also agreed to consider redistributing the affordable units, so they are less clumped together and more dispersed on each floor and on every floor. The applicant is going to provide an amenities plan during compliance review, consistent with the testimony that has been provided tonight, in addition to having a thought-out The applicant has agreed to increase the retail space by 3,600 square feet, with a reduction of 12 parking spaces. The applicant and the board planner have agreed that this reduction, or this increase in the retail space and the reduction in the parking spaces does not result in any deviation or variance from the redevelopment plan. The, the location of the electric vehicle spaces will be addressed with the township engineer during compliance review. During compliance review also, the traffic signs on Joseph Street will be reviewed, but that is ultimately a council decision. And during compliance review, there will also be consideration to traffic calming devices at the corners. Do you agree with these conditions, Mr.?
Counselor, they also have to look at Broadway.
Okay. What are the streets that they're going to look for the comment?
Joseph and Broadway.
Okay, Joseph and Broadway. Do you agree with these conditions?
Yes, Mr. Cruz.
Just one additional comment. You've heard the term, "a fully conforming application." What does that mean? That means following the ground rules that the council set. The applicant has to follow those ground rules, and the planning board has to follow the ground rules set. The planning board doesn't have the choice of making new rules. That was done by the council when they adopted the redevelopment plan. So, the applicant, as Mr. Flannery did state, have made concessions. Typically, what happens is you judge the application that was before you, and there has been a substantial change to the application, but fortunately, doesn't result in any deviation or variance from the redevelopment plan. Those are just my, my general comments regarding the application, and the standard that you have to follow, and the conditions that the applicant has agreed to.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, you can entertain a motion and a discussion, and...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a few comments just on what was said this evening.
First of all, I do appreciate the concessions, and I know it's very late in the evening, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. I do appreciate the comments that our legal counsel, Mr. Cruz, made regarding this plan, and the issues that the township is faced with, as well as what Mr. Ricky said, our planner. And that is, basically, we had a master plan with a downtown village district. On top of that, to accommodate the third round of housing requirement by the state, we overlaid onto that the opportunity to build units that would achieve the goal of fulfilling the requirements that Mr. Ricky mentioned. Most towns, as you know from all the traffic in this town, have fulfilled their requirements, and they are driving through this town. We are in a situation where everyone's done with the third round. We're pretty close to it. They're down to a handful of dozen or two dozen units that they have to fulfill. We have a long way to go to fulfill the third-round units, and we do not want to miss out on those bonus units. And we're really on a tightrope right now, regard to that. Plus, we now have the fourth round to deal with. So, this is just the beginning. I mean, this is, we're going to have to deal with this. What is the issue? The issue is the state. Those are the people that you need to contact. State legislators, the governor, and that's really what has to be done here. So, I don't want to go on to it, I just want to mention a couple of other things. The parking on Joseph and Broadway, which the council approved the modifications. As was mentioned several times by one of the citizens this evening, how are they going to get out of their driveways? How are they going to deal with people parking that go to these retail stores, that live or visit people that live in these apartments? That's why we changed the parking requirement, okay? So, I hope that's clear. The angled parking, the additional parking on Broadway, that is why we needed to do that. We don't have parking lots, we don't have the money to buy land to build parking lots at this point. It's not really a top mandate. One of the top mandates that we had in this town was, let's get rid of the old AMP, and put something there that will help this town. I do appreciate the concession that was made regarding the retail space, which is one of the original goals of the property development. If anyone has any further questions, we'll be discussing this, I'm sure, at the upcoming council meeting. If you have any other concerns or questions about the affordable housing plan, I'd be happy to talk to any one of you. You can call my number. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board like to make a statement or comment? If not, would like somebody make a motion regarding this application?
What kind of motion? Motion to approve? What conditions? Motion to deny? What, what kind of motion?
Be up to the person making that motion.
Okay.
Okay. As stated, we have been given a set of requirements for this property, and the applicant meets all those requirements. So, I make a motion to approve this application with the conditions our Counselor has outlined. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion regarding that? It's not a roll call?
Mayor Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Alwark?
Yes.
Councilman Menity?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Triola?
Yes.
Mr. Gribb?
Yes.
Mr. Gronkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Gersner?
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we're still in a meeting, in session. If anyone from the public... Excuse me, excuse me, we're still in meeting. If you wish to have discussions, please leave the chambers. At this point, if anyone from the public wishes to come forward to make any comments to the planning board regarding any topics, please do so. Seeing, all in favor?
Aye.
I know, those. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close to the public. Do I have a second? Mike, thank you. All ayes?
Aye.
Ayes.
Any nays? New business. I understand Mike Triola is leaving the board, and I wish to thank him for his years of service to the board and the township. Thank you, Michael. We were sorely missed.
I just want to thank everybody who initially asked me to come on several years ago. It's been a blast, I've learned a lot. Thank you, Kevin, for guiding me. Thank you, Albert, for stopping me from saying too many dumb things. My only thing to the new members is, you know, don't be afraid to ask questions, and stick with your values. And to the public, who's no longer here, show up. It makes a difference. It definitely does. So, thank you.
Yeah, the number of questions people are asking of things that occurred five, 10 years ago is amazing, because they didn't show up or pay attention. Any old business? None? Okay. Our next meeting will be January 8th, February 5th, March 5th, next meetings. I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike, for your last time. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.[1751.69]